I could call the meeting to order if we could stand for the pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone would check to make sure their cell phones are turned off so we won't be interrupted.
No, I don't think so. I think I'm gonna wait because David goes first, right?
So we have public hearing safety with Mr. Martin.
So just to jump in, this is not a public hearing for you anymore, Mr. Martin, correct?
Correct.
This is just a presentation and that's okay, you read it correctly, but we've had a change since we created this last week and so when is it that you're supposing that your public hearing will be? June?
Probably June.
Probably June. So this is a presentation for you.
So the reason we're delaying this is because so many of the positions have changed, the policies have changed, that we really need to get everybody reoriented with the safety plan and what their job is and what they need to do. So I'm gonna touch on a couple of safety things and then I'm gonna give you a little update on the capital project. So we've had a safety meeting just recently, we talked about our drills and how things are going and some changes that have occurred within the district. And I'm actually gonna put Mr. Bergstaller on the hot seat for a second because as his position holds as a police officer, he is now tasked along with the other officers with coming through the buildings on every shift that they have in the police department. So Brian, do you want to give us just a real quick update on where you're at and what you think?
Can you come up to the microphone, please?
Sure. And I appreciate you coming, you made this really easy.
I'm Brian Bergstaller, police officer, 8th Police Department. We've been doing several drills and they've been outstanding. Everybody is very receptive with us being in the building. The new policy for our department is for every officer on every shift up until 11 o'clock to make a tour through the schools, all three, preferably if we're not tied up. Kids don't even really react to us anymore, they just accept that we're there, the staff is happy. So all around, I think it's really great and like I said, the drills are outstanding. So everybody's doing a great job. Any questions?
No, I want to personally thank the police department for initiating that, the lieutenant and the chief, and I think it's been working out very well and it's very good to hear that the kids are adapting well.
Okay, in addition to adding the safety meeting, we talked about a number of different things.
Sorry, excuse me for a minute. Don Softin is up on the screen now, he's coming in from Pittsburgh.
Philadelphia.
Philadelphia.
Sorry.
Let's see if this works better, Don, than last year.
No, that was me when I was in Texas.
It was, oh, it was you in Texas?
Yeah, when I was...
It was a two-minute delay.
Yeah, when I was voting when you were on the next motion.
That's right.
Mr. Berg, thank you.
Don, you can hear everything all right? Okay. Don, you can hear everything all right? Any problems?
I can, I can hear pretty much everything, yes.
Okay, all right. So in addition to what Brian talked about, the drills and lockdowns that we're going through, we talked about some other things, we're looking at some facial recognition software, security cameras and where they're gonna go and what they're going to do. A number of people attended the safety seminar at UB and Sandy, correct me if I'm wrong, but they had a speaker from Florida, correct?
Who are your folks, tell me?
The UB seminar.
Yeah.
Okay, so it was the woman from Florida who was...
No, 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 no.
Sandy Hook?
Sandy Hook.
Okay, Sandy Hook.
It was the mom of a six-year-old in Sandy Hook.
Okay, so it was a mom from Sandy Hook that basically took the stage to talk about the things that went right and the things that went wrong and we talked a little bit about that within our, within our, within our safety group. We talked about some potential inservices, they submitted requests from the teachers, first aid classes, self-defense classes, to kind of enhance their abilities already. And I know Brian can attest to the fact that a number of the teachers are already during the lockdown standing behind doors with golf clubs and hockey sticks and lacrosse sticks and baseball bats and all the good things that, you know, we try and teach them to do. And we talked about winter issues and the fact that winter isn't letting go, as we enter our almost 95th day of January here. So, you know, those things that we're doing to, you know, prevent slips and falls and things of that nature. So that's kind of where we were with the safety committee at this point. Again, as I said, once the safety plan is updated, I will present it again in June so that it can sit on the table for 30 days, you can approve it in July, and we can get it sent out to the appropriate agencies. Okay, so I want to talk about the capital project. So the Eden 2020 capital project and where we're at as of April of 2018, and we will start with the Eden Elementary School. As of this morning, Mrs. Anzalone and I toured the auditorium of the elementary school, the stage is being refinished, it looks absolutely marvelous. They'll be staining it within a couple of days and then applying finish to the stage. We're going to basically have a first-class performance auditorium when we're finished down there. You can be really impressed with what you see. In addition, we now have the sound booth has been installed. My apologies, the picture is a little rainy here, it's really dark up there today, but I took it. So that's an enhancement as well as the handicap seating on each side of the sound booth. If you've been to the building lately, you'll remember we had leaks coming through that center stair tower, so we've opened that ceiling up so we can get a good look at it now as to what's going on. So we're working with campus, we're working with campus construction to hopefully find out where the water's coming from and we can resolve that shortly. This is the entry hall going through new district offices, that's right near the nurses' office. This is the new multipurpose conference room. Carpet's down, we have some appliance appliances that we're going to put in there.
Don, can you mute your mic unless you want to make a comment? We're hearing a lot of background noise.
All right, see if that's muted.
Oh, yeah, that's better.
Yes, that's quieted it down.
Okay, so this, this room is a multipurpose room, there's some technology that's going in there, it'll be a bit of screen TV, so it'll be used for more than just board, executive sessions and conferences that we hold here at the district. There's a little break room that's underway right now for everybody that's pretty much resides in the new district offices, there's a small bathroom in there. This will be the new main entrance and secretary's station to the district office, coming in off of the Alcoa parking lot. So you'll come into that secure vestibule there where you'll be screened and the secretary will process a telephone call to the appropriate office to notify them that they have a visitor. There's my digs. Superintendent's area. Superintendent's office is on the left-hand side, she has a small conference room on the right. Her secretary is the beout in the carpeted area that you see out front and all of their needs and equipment will belong there. We have a small common work area that is between the district office and the business office and you notice that it's already been utilized by some of the construction people. This will be the business official and the financial operations center. I'd like that for a title, Laura, you like that?
Yeah.
So Laura's office will be on the right-hand side, her little conference room will be on the left-hand side, her secretary's and the people that handle payroll will be out in the carpeted area. The treasurer's office is handling the books and really with issues that Laura presents to her. The hallway that is between where the, where the main entrance is and the district and business office has been maintained, so that area, we still haven't decided exactly what it'll be if there'll be anything, but for the moment it's a contained hallway. So right now the cafeteria is under renovation, the floor's been ripped out, the ceiling has been ripped out, some of the existing lights are still hanging, they're working on removing some of the ductwork for the air handlers, that'll, that'll be happening this week. We did bait the asbestos over the break, recent Easter break. And we had a few complaints about the orange solvent that was, that was huge, but it is in no way, no means harmful to anybody, a Centrus-based product. So hopefully continue to work with those issues, making that thing in the space.
Yeah, it's not, obviously that isn't something any...
Yeah, somebody else is involved right now. Yeah. All right, so they're getting that space prepped so that they can install a new ceiling system, the new network system, the new, well, I shouldn't say new, reinstalled audio system and rework the stage a little bit so we'll have a more functional cafeteria. We did maintain an area for the students so that they can still use and get to the serving lines and that's at the end of the cafeteria, so they still come in and process through the serving line, it can do trade returns, and they go over here to half of the gymnasium which is being used as a temporary cafeteria along with the Hard Work Cafe which is just down the hallway. And I think it's pretty well received, I think from the comments Laura has given us so far, it's something different, the kids are enjoying it. So it's just, so far it's worked out. Other things that have happened backstage, the picture in the upper left is a new network closet, the existing one was there, now it's all been closed in so it can be air-conditioned and hopefully we won't have as many failures on equipment there. The one in the lower right is the work room that existed, that little triangular room off the library, so that too has been closed off and will be air-conditioned as well for that equipment. There are kindergarten rooms, kindergarten rooms are coming along now, you'll notice the upper left has some cabinets installed, all new lights are already in place, the upper right, the gentleman is installing cabinets and on the back wall of all of these rooms in the corner, you'll see that little, that boxy thing and the ductwork above, well that's where the heating and air conditioning equipment is installed for those rooms, each room will have one of those.
David, can you just stay on that one for a moment and talk about the way it used to be?
Okay, so what we had in this case, we had six smaller classrooms that we have torn walls out between and we have turned them into much larger classrooms for the kindergarteners and now we have four of them. So instead of having classrooms with roughly 600 square feet, we're now in the 800 to 900 square foot for a kindergarten classroom. So in the, in the left corner, we still have a bathroom, if you look at the upper-left picture, we still have a bathroom, you have a, you know, obviously a countertop like we had in the old, old rooms with sink and a drinking fountain and that kind of stuff, and the little green box to the right is, is a room that can be set up with cubbies or storage and then farther to the right, you still have more room where you can either set up for cubbies or storage. The main office, doesn't look like much right now, just in studs, but that is room one, as you first came in, the existing main entryway, it is the first, what was the first kindergarten classroom on the right-hand side and they have started putting the services in there, they've run into a couple of small issues, but slowly but surely I can see the footprint of the area coming together. So it'll start shaping up here very shortly as they finish putting in the wiring and the service, excuse me, services and the drywall will go on and it will give it a lot more definition. High school, the middle and high school as it's now branded. Okay, we have a lot of electrical work going on, we've already torn out the service that fed GLP in elementary with Cogen and in doing so, we removed the service equipment that existed in the electric room of high school. So now we have a much smaller piece of high voltage gear that's in the upper-left picture in the right-hand corner. In the lower-left side, we have a new high voltage transformer that's feeding currently those switches on the right-hand side, all of that will come out during the summer in individual phases. So we did some work over the, over the break so that instead of shutting the high school down for a long period of time, we were able to shut it down for a week, get the high voltage switch changed, put the new transformer in and now we can just close segments and take the power away from certain segments of the building over the summer and just do sections of the building rather than having to shut everything down for two to three weeks. We also now have a new backup generator that sits out by the greenhouse, we used to have a very small generator, now we have a little larger generator, so instead of killing what we had, which is exactly what, what happened, the one that we had was just about dead by the time we pulled it out, we have one that can much better service the equipment that's connected to it. Music suite, I don't know if you've been down there to visit it, but I did take a couple of pictures of a couple areas, the chorus room is in the upper-left and one of the practice band rooms is in the, in the lower-right with all of the instrument storage cages, I guess is the best way to put it, but the beauty of having those cages unlike having it in just a single room is that you get air circulation, which is one of their complaints. So it's much better for the instruments and it keeps the humidity level down. In the back of the chorus room, that thing, that segmented thing in the, in the picture is actually full of music and each one of those pulls out, it's a huge vertical file and I'll bet each one of those weighs probably 300 to 500 pounds. So there's a tremendous amount of music from different musicals and things that the band and chorus play, so all of the music suite music and information is housed in that cabinet. Well, I'm gonna pass it. Sorry, Lucinda's NOx Center is, is called, the Network Center, and I can't go back with this program and I haven't figured out how to do that yet, but the NOx Center is, is taking place, that was the previous slide. Today, they just put the floor in there, the air conditioning is installed, it won't be long before the existing Network Center starts getting transferred into the new Network Center and a lot of the new connections that have been made can be put into use and fired up with new switches and servers and things that are a part of her systems that are throughout all of the buildings. In the boiler room, one of the problems we've run into is because of regulations to spell CO detectors, we have not been able to maintain a CO detector in the high school boiler room and the reason is because the loading dock sits there, so every truck that comes in sucks in carbon monoxide and sets the detector off, so we had to install a makeup air unit that draws air off of the roof to be able to feed air into our boiler systems. So now we have a fully functional CO system within the boiler room which we're required to have. Now, one of the things that is going to be a jewel for the community is the new community fitness center. Jack, I don't know if you've seen all of this yet, have you?
I've seen these pictures, yeah.
You have, okay. So just this recently, the equipment was installed and we've slowly but surely, we're not done working in the room, slowly but surely, we're going to be bringing some of this together and eventually we'll get it functional for the students. So the equipment's been installed, it's been placed, the company that we bought it from did the work and they have tested everything to this point. So as soon as we get the rest of the services installed here, and I know Lucinda has some TVs that have to be installed yet and connected, and we have to verify the fire alarm is up, we still need to put an AED in the room, and the PA system has to be fully functional before we can take ownership and start using the room for the students. Eventually, we'll, we'll open it up to the community, but we're not gonna do that just yet because we want to shake this whole thing out, make sure everything is done right before we do that. And we have some dedication and things that we still need to accomplish. So we have a lot of electric, electrified equipment, steppers, rowers, you know, treadmills, those kind of things, and we have weight equipment. All in all, it is a very, very nice fitness center, there are very few that are gonna rival what we have installed here, I can tell you that. So what's this summer's highlights look like? We're gonna, we're gonna install the front entrance, canopies and parking, the expansion of the Jennings Road parking lot for the football field, a lot more electrical and network upgrades, I know a lot of teachers have asked for more outlets in different areas, so we're gonna, we're gonna have to address that yet. Fire alarm systems will be installed, we have new air handlers for the pool and the gym, that'll be happening shortly, a lot of new LED lighting going in for the gymnasium. The middle school room development is, is gonna be happening and we're prepping for that as we speak, right now, trying to get everything organized and the game plan together. Auditorium lighting, the HBAC renovations will be taking place, the secure entries, the networks and cameras, hopefully the smart bond issue will be approved here shortly, so we can get all of that moving. A lot of moves, setup, painting, sprucing up, cleaning, contractor pushing, and more of my hair loss will continue. All right? And after we get done with that, we're gonna have a dedication and a club event which we still need to do, so that'll be coming. With that, any questions or concern?
When do you see the Eden Elementary able to use the auditorium? How soon?
Okay, we're probably looking at mid to late May the soonest because we still, even though we're getting to the stage where a lot of the mechanical stuff is being done, but the sound system, everybody still has to be trained with that. The video system, everybody still needs to be trained with that. So even though we have things we'd really love to put in there, and I still have to give the auditorium stage time to dry and get the curtains back up, I think you're probably mid to late May.
And how soon do you think the superintendents and all of those offices will be ready for them to move into?
Well, I'm hoping I can get Laura and her staff moved down there before the end of May, so that's good. I'm hoping I can get Sandy and her staff moved down there before the end of May.
And, and you had middle school room development, what do you, what is happening in those rooms?
Okay, so a lot of that is falling back on my staff. We planned the new painting, I've met with the teachers and Mr. Servoni and Mrs. Karstedt and the teachers, and we talked about what has to happen in those rooms to make them functional for them. So I've got money in the budget, I just need to get the budget passed, so there's my plug. Everybody needs to get out there, promote this coming for a budget, make sure we get it passed so I can get this middle school thing on it, on the, underway and get it done.
So you're talking painting and whiteboards installed?
Painting, I got a wall I have to put up with some outlets and that kind of stuff, so yeah, and I've got, I think I've got a sink or a couple sinks that need to have countertops put on them, so yeah, there's quite a bit to do in a short period of time.
All right, thanks.
I had a question also.
Sure, go ahead.
There was some concern about the ventilation in the art room and I understand you have come up with a...
Right, so this week, I'm, well, I'm hoping before the end of this week, I'm gonna be meeting with the, with the engineers, we're gonna talk about adding some ventilation in the art room itself by putting a unit on the roof and ductwork and drills in the ceiling that will hopefully alleviate, you know, whatever might be the issue. But I, at this point, the ceiling has already been replaced, what we thought was the problem was an old, I don't even know what to call it, but it was a ceramic...
Hood.
Hood with a spinning potter's wheel and that discharged up through the ceiling and out. We don't know whether something happened over time that it was just pushing that above the ceiling and that's what Lisa was, was experiencing when she first came aboard with some ceiling repairs. So hopefully we've corrected that and the ventilation will, you know, just help increase the, you know, the amount of fresh air. I've also asked the engineers to look at the heating system because I have an issue with our unit vent and a couple of other unit vents in that, in that wing that were never upgraded and need to be upgraded.
Thank you.
So that'll be this week, hopefully.
Thank you for that.
Dave, Dave, it seems like, like in the concession stand and now in the fitness center, we're getting a project 95 or 98 or even 99% done but just not complete. Is this, and I, and I realize that could happen, is this within your expectation, is this, or is this something that's a real source of frustration because things don't seem to be communicated to finish up a, a project?
No, I think, I think a lot of it is, is still sitting on a punch list that we know about it. I mean, some things we just can't do yet, the staining on the outside, obviously we can't do that because...
Some of it's just timing.
Yeah, some of the small things, we're experiencing some issues with some locks that they installed, so we know those have to be fixed. If there's anything that you're finding that you really want to let me know about...
Do it now.
Send it to me, so I can just keep pushing it on it because I don't want to miss anything.
As you know, I wouldn't hesitate and I, and so, but I guess my question is, do you think it's within expectation or, or should we be pretty disappointed that, that, not, not you, but whoever's, you know, campus construction or whoever's running the show is just not, we're getting 98% of this, 99% of a project done and there's just...
I guess I need some more clarification because we're not seeing 98 and 99, what is it that you're concerned about?
Like, for example, in the concession stand, the molding along the floor isn't done and all of our equipment's already moved in and it would, it seemed to me it would take, I don't know.
And the carpeting works.
Yeah, it would, it would take, you know, one guy one day. In the fitness center, we have this gorgeous fitness center that currently we can't use and there's the, the item... and the items that you've mentioned are important, but pretty small.
Well, I can tell you, that's not...
Those are empty health, those have to be done.
Yeah, they have to be done.
And those are not campus or Young &amp; Right.
I see.
That's us.
Okay.
So what you're seeing along with the elementary auditorium is, I can't speak for the molding on the floor, but in the concession stand, but is us taking a look at a particular space and realizing that we didn't spend as much money on it as we thought, which is a plus to campus, because that's their job, is to help us be as prudent as we can, and then saying, well, we're here, let's do some more. So the floor and auditorium, the backstage being painted black, getting the curtains dry cleaned again, those are all brand-new things that were never in the punch list to begin with.
I see, all right.
But some of it, we might just miss, right? So...
And I think with every project, you always have something that's...
It's an enormous project in multiple buildings.
And that particular one went on triple speed, I think.
Right.
Right, so that we could get to it. So there's a good possibility that, and we went triple speed on a couple other ones. It's a $22 million project with not a lot of people working on it. Like the cafeteria at GLP, to get that thing abated in a week while the kids were out was a masterful job, and I credit campus for that.
So all in all, thumbs up and...
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, you know, there's some concerns that we've talked about, you know, with architects and the engineers.
That's true of any project.
Yeah, but you're going to have that with virtually every project.
Okay, all right.
So, yeah, I think we're in pretty good shape. I'm trying to get as much of it back to them and say, hey, we still have to deal with this and...
How about that? Ceiling up to the third floor in the elementary, how soon do you think you'll have that under control? I know that's been a, it's been going on forever, I know that.
It's really a two-fold problem. We pulled it apart, A, so we could see what was up there, and B, we got to get to the outside, because that's really where the answer is. You've got to stop the water from getting in before, you know, it can actually come down through a ceiling. So, that'll be the next phase, is actually doing an exterior assessment. But just getting the ceiling out of there, that had to happen.
Yeah, yeah.
There were some issues with the ceiling.
But that's not the capital improvement, that's a different project, right?
That's a different, that's a...
Wow, impressive. Paul's paying attention.
Capital improvement is going to, well, that's sitting in the architect's hands to go to all day.
Right.
Okay.
And that'll be hopefully the front sidewalk, right here, the auditorium. Other questions, concerns? Again, if you do find anything and you see anything, don't hesitate, shoot me an email, make a phone call, whatever, because I try and stay on top of that as much as I can. All right?
For sure. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Code of Conduct, Mr. Servoni.
Do you want to unplug?
No. What are you plugging right now?
Yes.
Hey, guys, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you.
How are you, Jack?
Superb.
Good job. Well, I've got two.
Lucky dog.
Oh, yeah. Give one to my husband, sure. He needs a code of conduct.
[laughing]
It's recorded.
Oh. Jeff, I...
Right, thank you.
Yeah.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Mr. Soffin, how are you? This is my first time doing the code of conduct presentation. This is a public hearing, changes and modifications to our current code of conduct. And just when I came in, I was talking to Mrs. Grunder, who works with me and the building shared decision-making team, and you'll probably see me back up here again in a month because we saw a couple important pieces that Marlene called, so thank you, Mrs. Grunder.
Go for it, Marlene. Good job.
Yeah, no, I'm thanking you. So if you look through, this is the code of conduct that we use. Typically, this work happens at the building level, decision-making teams in every building will review it, and they'll send it to, it used to be Mrs. Mencana, now they send it to me. We put the changes in, we take a look at it, a million people read it, and then we come up here and we present it for a first read at this board meeting. So some of the changes that we did, a lot of them were just housekeeping items with the middle school and the assistant principal piece. The first change you'll see is on page three. We've added Mr. Schibish and myself with new titles under the dignity for all students. If you could go to page nine. We added number 17, it should be highlighted in yellow. I don't know if you guys want me to read all these, or if it's good just having them in.
No, you're good.
You're good.
Okay. You'll see the highlighted section for the bottom half. Page 11, you'll see some changes with assistant principal removed. If we go to page 12, you'll see we changed the configuration of the schools, 3 to 5, middle and high school highlighted. Page 14, we added some order to number 12. Everyone's with me on 12?
Yep.
I think okay.
Yep.
On page 14. Page 22 is our biggest change. You'll see the changes in, that are highlighted there to our attendance policy for the middle On page 23, you'll see additional changes, middle, high, assistant principal, some more housekeeping items. And then on page 24 is our last change, highlighted toward the bottom. I can tell you already that I'll probably come back to you next month and talk a little bit about some secure entry changes that we did but didn't make this draft.
Is there anything in these changes that's not necessarily grammatical, but it's substantial?
Yeah, the page 22 is not grammatical, it is substantial, how we operate as a school.
Which one?
On page 22.
Go ahead. With regards to attendance?
Yeah, in regards to attendance, the old policy, what we did is we, it's been a lot of talk with the faculty and me over the past few years, Mrs. Mencana, around attendance and grading. And our current policy that was in the handbook, it just wasn't right, it was illegal and really not defendable with state aid. I don't think we would have won any. If you missed so many days, you failed. So what we did here is we talked to our attorneys, actually worked a lot with Mrs. Johnson on this, we talked with attorneys, and we got some good advice to add the sections that you see highlighted. And really, those were just added. So it gives us something in our code of conduct that lets students know that if you're going to miss class, and it divides it by semester or a full year course, that after a certain point, you will start to receive zeros. Not just you missed class and failed the course with the old policy. This is if you miss a certain number of days, any progress needed, be handed in, after a certain point, we'll receive a zero. So it just gives our code of conduct and our attendance a little more credibility. Even if you read here, it says you'll be required to stay in class or required to attend. Really, this is designed not for the student on a medical or that has the right to be absent. It's really designed for the student who's just skipping and not taking their studies serious. Questions in regards to that?
I have a couple questions.
Sure.
So after these students miss that number of days, they start receiving zeros. Are they dropped from the class and put in a study hall, or do they remain in the class? Or how's that going to work?
They remain in the class.
Okay. And is there, I'm sure there's a lot of things that happened prior to this, as far as parents being contacted, counselors getting involved?
Yeah, all of that happens, that's a constant job that we have at the junior, senior high currently. When we see attendance get to a certain point, we start to pound the pavement and look for reasons why students are missing. Most of our students with a high absentee level are medics. If they're not, then there's separate cases and everyone is handled in its own unique way. Typically done as a big team effort.
Right, do we mail letters home after like 15 absences?
Yeah, certainly, I believe it's...
Should be 5, 10, 15.
It's like 5, 10, 15. A lot of phone calls, you know, so... Did I answer it all for you, Mr. Shepherd?
Yes, I did, thank you.
That was a big change, though, that was a lot of work. I know Mrs. Johnson spent a lot of time on with the attorneys, getting us some answers. I actually have a breaking mail correspondence that I want brought here to pass off to the board.
Breaking mail? It's breaking mail? It's like, is that like breaking news for the day?
Well, this was, this is what guided us, this is a 10-inch change.
Oh.
And it quotes some case law. It's pretty cool, it's a pretty good reading.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is it?
Yeah. I just had to make one.
Oh, okay.
Do you have an extra copy of the code of conduct for...
Present here.
Present.
Oh, she has it too.
Thank you, thank you.
So next step?
So next step is this sits and gets a read, and we already know from just coming in earlier that there's a couple things we need to change. But I would say these changes should all be good to go, especially the attendance policy one and grading. That's the biggest one, the rest of the primary, those are all housekeeping type changes. The couple that I'm going to come to you with, I think, make a lot of sense as far as secure entry and just kind of process to come into building.
So you'll get this posted on our website by tomorrow?
Yeah, it's...
It's already there?
It's currently on the website.
Okay.
You read it, it's been on the website, you read it now, it sits, we do a first read, any changes that we want to make, we then make.
Got it.
And then I'll do another presentation of any changes that we come up with.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Budget adaption presentation.
How's that doing?
Seems...
There's a button that you'll see to turn it out, not him.
Lucinda, that's not what I see on my screen. That's my screen saver, it's not my, what I'm looking at.
Cute picture, though.
That's interesting.
Your grandson?
Yes.
You've got it. Okay, so push it back up to, just from the beginning, let's see, a little color. Little mirror. Okay. I don't know what that is, but...
So welcome, this is the next phase. Later in the budget, you're going to be asked to adopt. So I wanted to take everything from the budget workshop and give you one more chance to look at everything all compiled and put together. You each have a handout, a one-page document with some yellow highlights. Those are some totals for you to look at if you have questions to help you in understanding this process. So, the first thing the new budget is going to do, it's going to add some new positions. We're going to add a school resource officer, and we're hoping to share some of those costs with the town of Eden. We're looking for a new social worker, two 10-month monitors for the middle school, high school, and one special education teacher. We're looking at some increases to our part-time staff. Physical education teacher will go up .14 FTEs. The high school attendance clerk, the 10-month position will be increased .5 FTEs. A business teacher will go up .36, a music teacher .03, and a technology teacher .16. We want to talk about some of the shared services that are going on with our district and some of the efficiencies that we're doing to help keep taxes lower for the taxpayers of Eden School District. Our school resource officer, we're hoping to share costs with the town of Eden. And the town of Eden will be the ones who will supply the officer for us, as is their expertise. The towns of Eden and Evans currently collect taxes for the school district. Erie County prints our school tax bills. And Erie County does our voting ballots, and it also allows us to use their voting machines for our budget. We share services through COTRS with Erie 1 and Erie 2 to maximize any savings we can do there and to get as much state aid as we can. Erie 2 Workers' Compensation Consortium we utilize to keep our workers' cost lower so we can go and be self-funded in essence, instead of hiring and some outside agency getting a profit. We use the School Municipal Energy Consortium, SMAC, to buy the utilities for national gas and electricity, so we're buying the commodities for them to lower our prices because then we can pool our costs with other districts. We share transportation services with North Collins for special education and Bosse's Run. We share athletic teams with North Collins for football, volleyball, track and tennis. And we share swimming with Gowanda. All these help us to allow our facilities to be used by the local taxpayers for the Eden Corn Festival. Eden Town Recreation, which is open to all district students, not just those who live in the town of Eden. Eden Boys and Girls Club, we do community education. And for summer school this year, as last year, we will be using facilities at North Collins Central School District to help us while we're renovating our buildings. So the tax levy that we talked about at the workshop, .46 is the maximum we can go out with a 50 percent plus one budget passing of $66,000. Impact on a town of Eden home at $100,000 would be $14 a year. But the Board of Education has asked that the budget be prepared with a 2 percent tax levy, which will require a 60 percent majority. Will raise $285,000 in new tax levy, and the impact on an Eden home at $100,000 is $61. I want to point out that these numbers will potentially change before August because the tax assessment rolls and the equalization rates are set by the New York State Office of Real Property. And until we get those, which come in July and August, we do not have exact numbers, so we utilize the numbers from last year to determine the increases. So we're going to look at the proposed expenditures. General support, which is the district office, the business office, buildings and grounds, that's going up 11.13 percent. And part of that, a huge part of that increase is due to moving two buildings off of the CoGym, which is now failing due to its age and unable to produce enough electricity for those two buildings, and moving them onto the national grid. Again, we will have additional increased savings with the SMAC. Instructional is going to go up 2.81 percent, $420,000. Transportation, they've held the line, is going to go up .49. And the major portion of that is the software that's going to run the cameras and the global positioning system, the GPS that will allow people to access the school buses on their own devices to see where their student's school bus is. They'll be able to tell if the student missed the bus or the bus is delayed in coming to their home. Civic activities will remain the same. Employee benefits have gone up 3.65 percent, or $236,000. Our debt service has stayed the same in this line, but in inter-fund transfers, and some of that comes from the debt service fund, will go up 2.84 percent, or $265,000. Appropriative fund balance, what the heck is that? Well, that is the surplus that we're anticipating we will have from the 1718 year that we can pledge to reduce taxes for the 1819 school year. So that is going up 13.12% or $67,000, $68,000. Reserve usage, in that reserve usage, please remember, is your bus purchases, which will be a separate proposition if the voter is authorized. So that goes up 2.66% or $25,000. Again, your revenues are 3.7% or $1,072,000. So our proposed budget, as you can see, is a balanced budget with the inclusion of a 2% levy increase, which will require a 60% majority. The remaining schedule, the budget is due to New York State by April 24th. The budget hearing will be May 1st, and the budget vote, May 15th. Do you have any questions?
Laura, I just have a comment or something.
Okay.
Can you back up? Poor Don. Sorry, Don.
Don's wondering, why is everybody looking at the screen? So where do you want me to back up to, Sandy?
To the FTEs. So, the 1.0, school resource officer, social worker, two monitors that are 10-month, and the special ed are all safety, security issues for us as we see them, disregarding the special ed on the bottom. Those are very important to us moving forward, that we maintain those within our budget. The next page.
Yeah.
Oh, I can't see it, though, from my mic.
You can look right at my screen, Sandy.
I'll use it from here. Oh, it's okay. The FTEs that are listed on the sheet may or may not stay stable. I just wanna put that out there, that this is a first blush look. They could end up to be very different by July. This happens to us every single year as we see how our schedules pan out. We share teachers in different buildings, and we need to give appropriate travel time. So I just want everyone to realize that if it says .14 on here, it might actually be something different. So these are not stable. Okay? And then what's the next slide? Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Laura.
You're welcome.
All right. Request to withdraw specific item from consensus items. Nothing? Okay. Routine actions. Approval of consensus items. Recommended motion, that the following consensus items be approved as listed in the administrative memorandum A through DD.
Second. Questions or comments?
I just had a question with one of them in W-5.
W-5, okay.
Good.
Yes.
I just wanna know, I thought his name was Brian Latempio. That's what it says on one of our sheets. And I didn't know if that was like his special name or if that was a misprint.
It's a misprint. It's supposed to be Brian Latempio.
Marlene's two-for-two here today. Hey!
I had my caffeine.
She had her caffeine.
Sorry.
Thank you, Marlene. So with the change on five? Okay.
All right. We have a second. Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
All right. This is the approximate position in time that the board is designated to receive statements from individuals and groups. The board will review all statements, then respond appropriately at a future meeting. All persons in attendance are required to sign the attendance sheet and designate the representative's status, for example, a parent, teacher, bus driver, chamber of commerce, etc. There is a two-minute time limit. Anybody?
Doesn't look like it.
New business. Resignations, none. Appointments. All appointments will not be effective, and service to the district pursuant thereto shall not begin until there has been compliance with statutory and regulatory provisions for fingerprinting, certification, and clearance for employment. Recommended motions. Appoint election inspector. Recommended motion, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Mrs. Barbara Caffrey be appointed as an inspector for the annual meeting and budget vote on May 15, 2018, at a rate of $13.40 per hour. And further authorize the district clerk to fill any vacancies in these positions, which may occur prior to May 15, 2018, with individuals from the Board of Elections Inspector Personnel List.
Second. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Permanent appointment. Recommended motion, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Michelle Smith be permanently appointed as a teacher aide effective May 31, 2018.
Second. Comments or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Permanent appointment. Recommended motion, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Cynthia Casper be permanently appointed as a bus driver effective May 14, 2018.
Second. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Appoint senior clerk typist. Recommended motion, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Sherilyn Stevens be appointed on probation as a full-time senior clerk typist, effective April 18, 2018, and ending October 17, 2018. Salary is based on CSEA contract Level 6 Step 5.
Second. Comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Appoint extended leave substitute teacher. Recommended motion, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Sarah Bittner, who is professionally certified in early childhood education, B2, childhood education 1 through 6, and literacy, B6, be appointed as an extended leave substitute elementary teacher replacing Mrs. Rapp, effective approximately April 9, 2018, through approximately May 14, 2018.
Second. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Approve 2018-2019 school budget. Recommended motion, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 2018-2019 school budget in the amount of $30,090,000 be approved.
Second. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Cast votes for Bosse's Board of Education. Recommended motion, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education of the Eden Central School District cast one vote for the following candidates for the Bosse's Board of Education, with terms to expire June 30, 2021. Select up to four. The candidates are Robert Carpenter, Sylvester Cleary, Nancy Renkins, Nancy Stock.
Second. Discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Adopt 2018-2019 Bosse's administrative budget. Recommended motion, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education of the Eden Central School District, at a public meeting held on April 17, 2018, hereby adopts a resolution approving the 2018-2019 tentative Bosse's administrative budget in the amount of $3,37,407.
Second. Discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Approve 2018-2019 Bosse's service commitments. Recommended motion, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 2018-2019 commitment for Bosse's services be approved.
Second. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Information and proposals. Business report.
Well, what I'd like to update the board on is we've purchased a new routing software called Versatran, and the transportation department is working feverishly to get it up and running so that they can reroute the movement of the 6th grade up to the middle school model. And along with that, the first week in May, we will be installing GPS systems on the buses. So then on May 1st, MyStop, which is the tracking application that families can log into with their protected passwords to view only their student's bus, can start to determine where their student's buses are.
May 1st is this year?
May 1st is when the GPS are installed, but September 1st is when we'll be ready to roll everything out. We need to do some testing and make sure everything is working. We've been fortunate to push it up a little bit so that we can get everything set up so that when we hit September 1st, we're running instead of trying to fix.
Very nice.
And that's all I have.
Superintendent's report. So I just have a couple of things. First, you would've gotten an invitation from our advisors for National Honor Society, which is Thursday night. It should be a wonderful program. I certainly can encourage you to come. I've been there before. Certainly well-deserving our students. The second is, is Laura and I will now begin to work on public outreach, as I have in years past, to see if there are any groups within the Eden School District residents that are interested in having us come out and do a presentation, our budget update. The next is a question that I have for the Board of Education. According to David, and I guess I have a question for Lucinda, is, right? So we have our furniture. We have our auditorium come June 20. Is there any reason why we can't move these board meetings to the elementary school auditorium?
I remember late today that the sound system's not fully installed and is on hold for at least two weeks, so I hope so.
Okay. Okay. So the sound system in the elementary school is what we would be working off of? And what would be the difference in the setup?
Nothing.
It would just look the same?
Yes. You'll be using Zoom, though, for recording, so...
And we have that already?
We have it already. We just have to train you a little bit on that.
So the question I have for the board is, is if in fact we can get all that running, would you like to have the June board meeting at the Eden Elementary School Auditorium? Or would you like to hold off until the reorg?
I think if we can move in June, we'll move in June.
Okay.
I would like that.
I agree.
I think it would be really fun.
Soon as possible.
I would like to not be carrying everything. I think Barb feels the same way of tracking things between both buildings is really complicated. So, all right. So Barb, how much notice do you need if it's gonna work or not so that you get your paperwork out?
By the Friday before.
Friday before. What about you, Lucinda?
Again, I won't go to, like, see that sound system. But hopefully by, I think it'd be 18th of May at the latest.
Oh, so that'd be fine. So by mid-June, we would know?
Should go.
Okay. So let's shoot for June 20 here? I mean, sorry, at the...
The elementary.
At the elementary school? I forget where I am sometimes. So at the elementary school, and if not, we'll be back here.
Okay.
Fair enough? All right. Then what I handed each of the board members when you first walked in, I think is rather interesting. It comes out of this book that Barb and I were talking earlier. We're not quite sure who made it. We think possibly Bob Zimmerman, but it could've been made by some others. Have you given it more thought, Barb?
No.
No. I just don't know. But it has a compilation of just about every detail, going all the way back to the very beginning of history for both the town and the school. And one of the pages that I found in here outlined the boundaries of the Eden School District, talks about the establishment of the centralization from 1939, talks about passing a motion to re-study the Eden-North Collins recentralization from 1962, talks about holding a special meeting in 1965 and having a vote about Eden-North Collins-Evans, no, Farnham-Lake Shore, all reorganizing, talks about signatures that were in excess of 1,500 opposing and 316 yes, as a note by the author of how much bitterness was caused in any of those conversations. And in the end result, what we know happened after 1966 is that this building was built in the 70s. And so I thought it was a really interesting piece of history as we're going through our capital project to take a look at all the conversations that always occur between school districts and within a school district of how do you grow and maintain a good program for your students? And so certainly timely, given some of the news that's come out lately. In addition to that, what I just wanted to share was we, I certainly did listen to Erie County Executive's news report from yesterday regarding school transparency and budgets and also consolidations. Eden and North Collins were named as two potential consolidation schools. What I want to reiterate, or so much of what Laura put up on her sheet, is that these are conversations that we have all the time, is how to provide quality education at the least expensive rate for our taxpayers. And so we're very proud of the diverse amount of sharing and shared services that we have. We believe that the programs that we have shared between different school districts, including North Collins, are the best for our students, the best for our taxpayers and our staff. But we certainly always welcome more conversation about how we can do right by our taxpayers, but also do right for our students. So I'd encourage you to take a look at that report. Okay? That's all I have. All right. Board report, roundtable.
I'm good. We had a meeting. What was the date of the meeting with the...
Last week.
Last week? Was it on the last? We had a meeting last week where...
Yeah, they probably can't hear you.
Where we brought in, well, it actually was on request by the Assemblymen, and the Senator sent a representative also to Eden, and we're trying to get the SROs funded. And we're gonna have another meeting on May 2nd in regards to that. So we're gonna need some input from people. We're gonna need people to write letters. We're gonna need some involvement to try and get this funded. Right now, they are working on some bills, but all the bills are unfunded. So it'll be another unfunded mandate, or we will lose some of our other grants or revenues to pay for the school resource officer, is how it's set up now. So I think it's a very important piece, and we need to really come together and try and push for funding. According to both the Senator and the Assemblymen, the money is there. It's just getting the people that have control of it to release it.
Good point. Thank you for bringing that up.
The popularity rating came out today. It's getting worse and worse. So money may appear.
Money might appear. It's always interesting in election years and non-election years. So we are very proud of the people that we've gotten together. We have some more people that are being approached for these type of meetings where we have the fire department, the EMS, the police department, some staff members and employees from our school have been reached out to, some students we've reached out to to see if we can't get a very diverse stakeholder group to talk about safety and security in addition to that school resource officer. So it's a really nice key group of communicators. Thank you for bringing it up, Paul.
Anything else?
I'd just make a quick mention. Despite the record-setting weather, our turf field is getting extensive and extraordinary use, and games are being switched to our field as opposed to playing on other grass fields. And as crazy as the snow has been, and we lost some games because of the snow, I can't imagine if the snow melted, how many weeks it would be till we'd actually be on a field that was well-drained.
Oh, soaking wet.
We played a game, a boys varsity lacrosse game in East Aurora. Their field is down, but they couldn't play on... According to both the Senator and the Assemblymen, the money is there. It's just getting the people that have control of it to release it.
Good point. Thank you for bringing that up.
The popularity rating came out today. It's getting worse and worse. So, money may appear.
Money might appear. It, it's always interesting in election years and non-election years, yeah. So, so, we, we are very proud of the people that we've gotten together. We have some more people that are being approached for these type of meetings, where we have the fire department, the EMS, the police department, some, some staff members and employees from our school have been reached out to, some students we've reached out to, to see if we can't get a very diverse stakeholder group to talk about safety and security in addition to that school resource officer. So, it's a really nice key group of communicators. Thank you for bringing it up, Paul.
Anything else?
I'd just make a quick mention. Despite the record-setting weather, our turf field is getting extensive and extraordinary use, and games are being switched to our field as opposed to playing on other grass fields. And as crazy as the snow has been, and we lost some games because of the snow, I can't imagine if the snow melted, how many weeks it would be till we'd actually be on a field that was well-drained.
Oh, soaking wet, yeah.
We, we played a game, a look, a boys varsity lacrosse game in East Aurora. Their field is, the field is down, but they couldn't play on it because there's still some construction going on. And we might as well have been at a skating rink watching a hockey game to see the guys just slide around and flip in the mud. And so, that would have been us, except worse, because I think their field probably drains better than we do.
Yeah, I bet it does.
And so, you know, thanks to the taxpayers, where we have just an absolutely beautiful facility that is being well-used.
There's some really nice comments that came out. I, I don't mean to put Marissa on the spot, but she might remember better than me, of some people that were here for the Polytech and the Hilbert. Would you mind just, just iterating some of those comments from people?
We ended up having, um...
Oh, boy, now you're really putting her on the spot. I'm sorry, Marissa. They were just so impactful that I don't want to miss the moment.
Thank you. With the Polytech-Hilbert game, we knew that we were going to have certain graduates that were on the field of Polytech that were coming back to Eden for the first time, had never experienced the terror.
That were here when we planned it, but couldn't play.
That were here when we planned it, but couldn't play on it. So, two of our freshmen were very excited to be back. But what we also ended up having was a student that I believe was from Chi-Li, graduated from Chi-Li. He's a freshman, and his grandmother lives across the street because his parents actually graduated from Eden, and they moved, I met them, I think, four or five years ago, and then they moved out to Rochester. And they just could not believe the change in all of the facilities. You know, mom is elderly and lives across the street, so she doesn't get to keep them up to date, but they were just beyond excited to be former graduates, to see what their, their alumni has done and this community, and they were very happy to be back. So, we got nothing but great reviews. And then, we hosted another collegiate game the week after, and Darren, the custodian, was working overtime here for that game, and he also received a lot of compliments as well from collegiate people, saying that this is one of the nicest facilities they've gotten.
Nice, thank you. I appreciate you coming up.
If nothing else?
Okay. Future dates. Annual budget hearing, Tuesday, May 1, 2018, 7:00 p.m., in the junior senior high school cafeteria. Annual budget vote, Tuesday, May 15, 2018, 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., in the junior senior high school auditorium foyer. Regular Board of Education meeting, Wednesday, May 16, 2018, 7:00 p.m., in the junior senior high school cafeteria. Anticipated executive session, recommended motion, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education enter executive session to discuss contract negotiations in the employment history of a particular person.
Second. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks, Em.